I'm Philip. Meeting. And it's in progress, apparently. Good. Just to remind everyone, we've got people online and here in the room. For those in the room, a little housekeeping. Emergency exit is in the rear corner of the room, and the assembly point is the far side of the car park. Toilet at the end of the corridor, on the right at the end, and acceptable toilet on the right of the lift. Help yourselves to tea and coffee, as I said before. Please do that during the meeting if you so wish. Tonight, Paul will clerk Sarah, Becca and Rachel will manage the minutes, questions board, participant settings and the IT generally. The meeting will be recorded and made available on our YouTube channel tomorrow. Those councillors attending by Zoom, please use the yellow hand. And for everyone else, ask questions through the Q and A board. First item, as always, is not going to be apologies. The first item is, pleasure of saying that we have a short video.
Transition Streets is all about coming together with your neighbours to achieve great things in your homes and your area. All you have to do is make a group with your neighbours and meet up for eight Transition Streets meetings in each other's homes. Your group will get fantastic handbooks full of facts, tips, project ideas and local information set out in six chapters. Each chapter is on a different topic, and your group will look at one chapter each time you meet. The first and last of your group meetings will be led by a friendly Frome Neighbourhood Network facilitator, who in the first session will help your group agree on how you want the sessions to run and give you some great tips on how to make each one meaningful, productive and fun. The rest of the sessions will be facilitated by you, with different members of your group taking it in turns to facilitate each time. Don't worry if you've never done this before. We provide session plans and facilitation tips to help you feel confident. Each chapter has a section at the end filled with family-friendly project ideas for you and your neighbours. Or you can come up with your own ideas. You know best what your own homes and neighbourhood needs. Whatever you end up doing, Frome Neighbourhood Network will support you and your group however we can. Just reach out. In other groups doing this in the UK, neighbours have made some incredible changes and made a real difference. In Totnes, nearly 500 households saved on average £570 a year on household bills and cut 1.3 tonnes from their carbon footprint. To get started, all you do is gather together six to eight households on your street. These might be neighbours you already know or people you haven't met yet. If you need help with this, we can give you leaflets to post through letterboxes or we can host an information session for people to come along and find out more. We already have Transition Streets groups meeting with their Frome neighbours, and they've loved taking part. It's really easy to get started and a fantastic way to build stronger connections with others in your community. We're so excited to see what you and your neighbours can do.
Great, thank you very much. And from Neighbourhood Networks, we've got Esme and Jenny here this evening. Welcome. They are happy to take any comments or questions if you'd like while they're here. The video, the video said it all.
I was just gonna say, I think it's great and well done. I remember being in the meeting, I think it was about a year ago, when this first idea was sort of floated. And so to see it having come all the way from that to this is brilliant. So, well done.
Thank you.
So Jenny, Esme, do you want to add anything?
Just to say, we've got five groups that are actively involved right now, and we're obviously looking for more people and hoping that the video is really gonna help in that. But also word of mouth, that people want to do it, and there's a bit of a buzz around it because people have done it on other streets. So tell everybody about it. And I've left a booklet on most tables. We didn't have enough for all of them. So you can just get more of a flavour of it. But I'm gonna go and snatch them back again in a minute. So if there's any questions, it'd be really helpful to us because then we might know what's missing from the video. Because the video really is supposed to kind of explain the whole thing.
Carla has a question.
It's just, probably lots of other people already know this, but because in the video you mentioned Frome Neighbourhood Networks and Transition Streets. So what is the difference?
Frome Neighbourhood Networks is set up specifically to be about community building on that very street level. And during lockdown, we had quite a network of people, and it was about kind of, you know, helping neighbours. After lockdown, then there were less people, as you can imagine, because everybody started going back to work and forgetting about their neighbours. But we're trying to build that back up again. And I personally did Transition Streets in Dorchester many years ago. And it was really reticent because it was a very diverse street. But eventually I plucked up the courage and went and asked neighbours and was surprised that they all said yes. And then it was so successful that we had, like, when we finished meeting, everyone went, "Oh no, we won't be able to meet again, what shall we do?" And then we set up a film group so we could carry on meeting in people's houses. So I had personal experience of how brilliant it was. And when it came up as an idea to do and the fact that Totnes had kind of revamped it a bit, then I really said, yeah, I think this is something that Neighbourhood Networks could really push, and it would really kind of, you know, get to the core of what we're trying to do.
Great, thank you very much. If there are no other questions. And people can get in touch with you. You've got contact information, we've got that for you. Thank you both very much. Great video. You're more than welcome to stay for our very exciting council meeting. But we do understand if you have other press engagements, like glasses of wine or whatever, then thank you for coming. Thank you. Okay, so move on to the next item. Apologies of absence, please, Paul.
Yeah, from Anne Hills.
Anne Hills, thank you. Can we... Yes, Martin. Yep, thank you for that, Martin. I spoke to Helen on Saturday, and sort of, I think a few councillors had spoken to her during the week. And we send her all our best and just want that to be minuted and that, you know, we wish her a speedy recovery. Dawn. Okay, so on the apologies, can we, oh please, Nick, propose Andy Jones second.
That's unanimous.
Thank you. Declarations of councillors' interests, please. Do we have any this evening? Nope. Okay, on that. And then approving minutes from the last meeting, the 21st of February 2024. Paul, I believe we had a couple of items on that.
Yeah, there was, there was one item. Resident from Alexandra Road came last week, last time, to talk about the possibility of a one-way system around that area. And I think Lisa has spoken to Bill, though.
Yes, I sent an email back to Bill. I, I know that Nick, you and Philip have also had an informal conversation with Bill. I've sent another email today looking for what the consultancy around the area has been. And Jane, I think you've had some emails from other residents on Alexandra Road. And we've organised, we've gotten in touch to see if they'd like us to come and hear their views. So Jane and I are in the process of looking at a date to speak to other residents of Alexandra Road and have invited further conversations with Bill.
Thank you, Lisa. Paul?
Yeah, there was an action. For those of you last time, Adam Boyd and asked how the devolution debate was going. And Max explained quite clearly where we were. And Adam enabled or facilitated a meeting with you and the portfolio holder for communities, I think. Max?
I'll report on that when I come to the unitary item. Thank you.
That's it on actions. Can we have a proposal, please, for the minutes of 21st? Andy Jones, seconded by Lisa.
So the rule about that is if you believe them to be correct, you can, you can vote in favour, but it's up to you completely. So it's by majority, and Mark is voting in favour, but Fiona is abstaining.
Okay, thank you.
So that's majority, then.
Okay, next, we'll take questions from members of the public. I'm not sure we have any members of the public in the room. Nope. And I'll take then any questions from councillors, from town councillors, please. Anita, and then Fiona, and then Nick.
Thank you. Twin towns of Château-Gontier and Rabca-Joit, as you know, take in turns every year to host the annual quadrupartite event, where each of the other towns sends 30 participants for that four-day period. This year, it's the year of Château-Gontier, and next year, it falls to Frome in 2025. Due to the cost of living crisis and the current unstable financial situation with Somerset Council, which obviously has a knock-on effect to us, we've advised our twin town partners that reluctantly we're not in a position to take our turn next year. This is not only due to the high cost of living, but there is a very high cost to hosting all those families. It requires quite a substantial staff resource to organise the events involved. And as well as all that, we'll be seeking host families to put up 90 people around the town for that four-day period. So that's why we sent that letter off to our partners. The response from all three has been very understanding and very sympathetic, but obviously displaying a very strong desire for us to remain some sort of connection because we've been going for so long together. I just wanted to reassure everyone that we will continue to work with our twin towns in whatever capacity we can. But we may have to look for new opportunities, new ways of working, to interact in a way that suits Frome's current circumstances. There are already thoughts and ideas on how that might happen, and we'll certainly keep councillor abreast of any developments in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, Anita. Can I just add to that? And I'll, you wanna follow up, Lisa? That I've been working on since November, a football tournament that's gonna take place in Moorhead and that Frome Town youth are attending with their under-15s, hopefully taking two teams, a boys' and one girls' team. And only this week had contact with Thomas Seeb, who's the tourism and economics person at Moorhead Town Council. They're proposing to have a teams meeting with Frome teachers that I've emailed last night and this morning to set up some kind of contact, not necessarily exchange, but to have some kind of contact across all subject areas to try and foster and keep those links going. Thank you for that. Lisa, did you wanna come back on twinning?
Yeah, thank you, Philip. I just wanted to ask Anita if anybody, if you're aware of anybody from Frome or Frome Town Council heading to Château-Gontier to perhaps have discussions.
Well, I know certainly, I know Philip, you're intending to go this year to Château-Gontier. Of course, the thing is that depending on who becomes mayor this year, they may also choose to go purely as a representative for Frome. That remains to be seen. I don't know of anyone else within the council at this stage.
Thank you. Fiona?
I just wanted to draw everyone's attention to the leaflets that I have shamelessly left on every single table. I've been quite shameless, actually, generally about this whole campaign, including using Juno Catherine's very cute dog as social media cat nib to try and get attention to it. As part of International Women's Day, which was last Friday, we have launched a campaign to try and raise £4,500 to give every year eight and nine student in Frome who needs one a plastic free period kit. When I say "we", that is a joint venture between Frome Town Council and Frome Medical Practice as part of Plastic Free Period and Green and Healthy Frome, which also includes adventure. There are many barriers that young people face to sort of being actively involved in things in school and social activities, and period poverty is one of those, and period anxiety and embarrassment and stress and all of that. So this is really about tackling that by providing a real solution. Because it's reusable, there's no sort of ongoing cost as well, as well as obviously contributing to reducing waste and the environmental benefits of that. So there is a very handy QR code on the bottom of your leaflet, which takes you straight to the JustGiving page. We're about just over a quarter of the way through as of 10 seconds ago. I have been frantically refreshing repeatedly for the last week. So that's over 1,200 and something pounds, which is amazing. But we really wanna do the whole thing. So please, please, please donate and also share with as many people as possible. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Fiona. Nick, I'll go to Nick and then I'll come back to you.
Thanks very much, Phil. Two things. One, our new town centre ranger, not so new anymore. Mike spends a lot of time trying to remove posters and stickers and things from bus shelters, litter bins, BT boxes, shop windows and so on. Really frustrating, and I think Rob's costed out about £80 a time to remove them. I've been going around, as has Phil, I know, taking photos and sharing them with some of the organisations that are responsible for hosting events where these posters generally advertise. And some have been very quick to come back and apologise. But I think it would be very useful to perhaps say something formally. I'm disappointed to say there's nobody here from the Frome Times for once. Oh, there is, I'm so sorry. It'd be lovely if Frome Times could please cover that. I'm so sorry, I didn't see it earlier. Because it's really frustrating, you know, we're trying to make the town more attractive, and then sometimes within 10 minutes after Mike has spent an hour cleaning something off, there's a new poster, and it's not as if they stick it on with blue tack. They sell a tape or wallpaper paste, it's really tricky, difficult. So please, could we get a strong message out around that? And my second thing was just to thank Dawn, who every month sends out a really helpful update, which I find really useful. Thank you very much. I found out what was going on and why there were roadworks, really useful things on there. So thank you.
Thanks, Nick. Lisa, did you wanna come back on something?
Sorry, I won't do this for the whole meeting, I promise. For the two kind of fly posters, right? People that put vinyl signs on, on the sides of roads and things like that. Where do we sit on that?
I had a meeting with Mike and Mark when you were away, Robco, incidentally. And we agreed that when there are banners, for instance, on the bridge coming into Frome, they're covered with banners for stuff ranging from, well, I won't go to what they were. But we've taken them all down, and we'll keep them for a couple of weeks. And if people want to ask where they are, they can have them back. So the idea is to basically allow the beautiful street furniture and architectures out there not to be covered with things that shouldn't be stuck on there.
So for the benefit of Frome Times, perhaps writing an article, no vinyl banners alongside no fly posters in Frome would be preferred.
Okay, great, thank you. Andy Rindmore?
Yeah, hello. I just wanna jump in on the fly poster thing. One of the venues involved is 23 Bath Street, and I work for them. So I've been doing a little bit of middleman stuff with 23. They are putting a very clear clause in their contract with external promoters that if they, if they do this, then there will be a fine. And if it carries on, they will be off the books. They're taking it quite seriously, doing what they can. I've seen it around the town, it is frustrating, it does look crap. And it, I was gonna use another word there, but it reflects poorly on 23. But they are, they are, I just wanted to fly the banner for them. So they are taking this seriously, so it's being done. And yeah, so there you go.
Thanks, Andy. Yes, it is very unsightly. Thank you. Any other Frome Town councillors' comments? Come to Somerset councillors, please. And just to reiterate what Andy said, we received a report from Dawn. Thank you very much, again. And we received also a report from our MP, Sarah Dyke. Over to Dawn and then Martin.
There's nothing really just to add, except that I think Martin has an update on the Crichell Care Home.
Thank you. Martin?
Thank you, Dawn has shamed me because I don't, I haven't written you a report for a while. But if you don't mind, I'll just verbally update you. The Crichell Court, I'm sure many of you know by now, that Crichell Court Care Home is, is due to be closed. I'm afraid I only found out at the same time as everybody else, and I wasn't very happy about that. The last I heard on that is that there is an interested buyer. Somebody may come in and buy it, but it's out of our hands. It's out of Somerset's hands, it's Somerset Care as an independent group, if they wish to, how they want to dispose of the building. My main concern in all of this is that the residents, if it does close, should be rehomed locally, and they shouldn't be forced to travel long distances. I was reassured there were places, spaces and other care homes in Somerset. And I sort of pointed out that Somerset is a very big county, and it would be completely unacceptable for Frome residents to be moved to Minehead, for example. I was told that there is a 30-mile radius. I still think that's not good enough. But I did ask the question that if there was, if any places became available in nearby towns in Wiltshire, would they, for example, or Bayons, would they go for that? If the, if, excuse me, if the finances were right, they, they would probably do that. Not a very happy situation, but we're keeping that going. The other thing that I'd like to mention, I think there's quite a lot, but really what really concerns you probably know about is Saxon Vale. The Saxon Vale development has now raised its head again. One of the problems we now find is that, I'm sure you, you know this, but Somerset is looking to sell the land, which brings a different dimension to the problem, the issue, rather, in that we needed being reassured that it simply wouldn't be sold to the highest bidder, that the, the relative merits of the plans that have been brought forward will be taken into consideration before the land is sold. I've been reassured that that won't happen, but I think it's incumbent on us as Somerset councillors to ensure the pressure is on property services to make sure that doesn't happen. The decision will be made by the executive of Somerset, and we have asked that they make that decision in, in Frome. They hold their meeting in Frome, and they hear all sides of the argument. We are relatively, relatively reassured that the, the best bid would win. And by that, I mean the best financial bid, I mean the best plan will win. But we're not utterly convinced, and we will continue putting pressure on in there. And as I'm sure, again, you probably know that Selwood Garden Community is, seems to be coming up on the horizon as well. I think that's about, that's about all you probably want to know from me.
Thank you very much, Martin. Any questions on that? Any comments at all from anyone? Thank you, Dawn, and thank you, Martin. Okay, item four. I believe this is Anita. An update on the work of the Frome Welcomes Refugees Advisory Group. Thanks, Anita.
So let me give you a little bit of background on this, if you would, please. Which is in February 22, as you know, Russia actually invaded Ukraine, which is where all these poles started to run into trouble. The UK government created a scheme to help refugees staying with hosted families. But what we found was that people were arriving in Frome long before that system really was up and running properly. We actually started a crowdfunding campaign because one of the things that happened was, of course, Rabca, which is one of our twin towns in Poland, came to us looking for help. They were desperately in need because they had a really huge number of people pouring in from the Ukraine into Poland. Rabca was, I think, took somewhere in the region of 17,000 or 18,000 within the first few days. I mean, it was monumental. So they were looking for as much help as they could get. They, they told us they had all the blankets they needed, all the other goods, and their warehouses were completely sacked out with things that had been sent over. But they were desperately in need of money to help the host families. So we started a crowdfunding, a crowdfunding campaign, which raised over £40,000, which was amazing and a huge credit to the people of Frome to do that. It was tremendous. That £40,000, obviously, a majority of it has already been sent to Rabca to help those refugees. Of that, we have still £15,000 remaining in that original fund. But with an informal arrangement between councillors, there are things that we could think about. But because Rabca have actually told us categorically there is no desperate need at the moment, what we've decided to do is to try and hold on to that money. Because who knows what's gonna happen next? There could well be another influx of refugees, maybe from a different country. We really don't know what's gonna happen. So temporarily, we're gonna hold on to that. And then as and when we get to the stage where it is needed, we'll have a discussion about how that would be used. If it's not needed within this administration, then clearly we'll go back to people and talk about what we might do and how that might be arranged to give out to the various people who need it. But there was also a lot of fundraising with Frome Rotary, who helped us out. They gave us all the profits from their shop, for instance, and did a lot of bucket shaking for us. And that, again, raised a huge amount of money, which we are now using to help refugees in Frome. The Welcome Hub, which was a contribution managed by Nikki Cox at the moment, and actually daily run by Irina and Emma, who were the coordinators. But there was so much in terms of volunteering for people who actually helped and supported all the displaced people, including all refugees and asylum seekers. And so our thanks go to all those people who put themselves out and gave their time and effort to help people in the early days, and are still continuing to do that. Irina and Emma work in partnership with all displaced community groups to establish what's working well and what still needs to be developed. And it's a service that positively engages with all our displaced people and also tries to support those people who are coming in. So the group of volunteers who were working around with the refugees, we decided to create a support group called Frome Welcomes Refugees in terms of looking at the finances and supporting them in that way. The group was, we, we worked on that until we actually established a proper infrastructure for the way it was gonna continue. So the advisory group, which was set up in 20, early 23, we work closely with the hub and support all refugees and all asylum seekers of any nationality. That's really important. We've got permission from all the people involved who have agreed to that because we've got an awful lot of refugees in Frome. It's not just Ukrainians. There are several other groups, all of whom are equally important. So there's, the other thing, of course, is that we can offer help and support to the hub itself. People like Lenka from Faircote. People like Lenka from Faircruel are very involved in that, trying to work out what support can be given in terms of helping out with goods. Rotary are very good with all the things that they can offer. And the group also looks at the disbursement of small grants when people actually apply for them. Those grants are used, sorry, can I go on one? The grants are actually used, we give a small cash payment, £50, to all new arrivals when they come to Frum. And that's really just to help them find their feet, so go and buy a cup of coffee, make a few phone calls, anything they need to do, just to make them feel that they've got to hold on something. So they get their £50, they get help with school uniforms and this is something that Rotary are very good at helping with. They help provide school uniforms quite often and there's a lot of help from Fair Frum, of course, about second goods and what have you, secondhand goods. As I was talking about, some furniture can be offered with the help of Fair Frum and other people. Carpets I know are donated, Rotary can help with those sorts of things. So when they move into their own accommodation, there is access to the sorts of things they'll need to create a home. There are activities we support to, for them to hold on to their culture. So when they decide they're going to have celebrations of one sort or they've got anniversaries coming up, we will help to fund those things, to make sure that they still feel like a tight-knit community and part of Frum. At the beginning of 2023, when we started, this fund stood at £16,000, £325.32, and we now have a closing balance of just over £9,000. So you can see it's not, it's not issued too widely, we're very frugal about how we actually give these things out. But you know, there's a steady trickle of demand on this money and hopefully that will continue to see us through for the next couple of years. So the refugee community itself in Frum, I just wanted to give you some figures on this. During 2023, we actually had 47 families in Frum and district from Ukraine, Syria, Eritrea, Kurdistan and Afghanistan, representing 139 people. 17 families are still hosted in accommodation and the rest of them are actually living independently now, which is wonderful. Some have obviously gone back to their homeland, but of those adults, about 50 of them are actually in work now, which I think is brilliant and it means now, of course, that they are in a position where not only do they, are they starting to feel entrenched in Frum, they clearly feel welcomed in Frum, but they're also contributing to our community and the economy, which is wonderful. So all in all, quite a success story so far, I think, thank you. Any questions? If I can't answer, I'm sure Nicky can, who's here tonight.
Can I just say, sorry Nick, can I just say thank you Anita and Nicky for all that you're doing and members of the hub? I'll go to Nick first and then anyone else?
So half of my words there Phil. What I think is really interesting and I think we all probably expect it is that great, the sort of snapshot of the families that are here and 50 out of 80 of the adults working, which is so powerful but hidden in this toxic environment that this current government have created where the suggestion that all refugees and asylum seekers are coming over here to steal and take from us. It's a great news story and brilliant work, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's indicative of how much they really want to contribute. You know, they're not sponges, they want to give something back and that's been evident all the way through, I think, wouldn't you agree Nicky?
I've got Ben and then Mel.
Yeah, initially, thank you Anita and thank you to the advisory group for all of the amazing work. I think for me, you know, talking about refugees, I just felt the need to give voice and acknowledgement to the tragedy and humanitarian crisis that is currently happening in Gaza. You know, it's also something that is incredibly relevant around this topic. You know, at present, over 30,000 civilians, 14,000 of which are women and children, have been killed and over 100,000 people currently face imminent starvation. So that being said, I just wanted to pose the question as to whether, you know, some of that £15,000, whether it could be redirected to supporting humanitarian aid into Gaza? If that was a possibility, whether that could be raised with the group? But it's just something that I felt the need to give voice to considering the situation.
It's an interesting point Ben and I hear all that, I just, my only thought, and again, I'll voice it with the group when we have our next meeting. My only thought is that money that's been raised in Frum, we really should be supporting people in and around the Frum area, that's pretty much it. And I know it's heartbreaking to see all that happening around the world, but I suspect, yes, and thank you for that, yeah. I'm sure, but because we've collected and, you know, specifically for refugees in Frum, I think it's only incumbent on us to make sure that that happens.
Thank you Ben, that's really important, thank you very much for voicing that. Mel please.
Whether we could extend our help in some way by perhaps bringing one or two children across or, I mean, in some way. I mean, I wouldn't normally raise international affairs at a town council meeting, but I hear tonight that the Israeli Defence Forces have shot dead a 12 year old boy with a firework in his hand. So it is called the refugee group, so it'd be great if you could make some consideration and much admiration for what the work you've done so far, thank you.
Thank you, yeah. Again, if there were refugees coming here, there would be no hesitation, it's about, do we actually extend that far out to support refugees? I'll take it to the group certainly, because I think it's worth a conversation.
Thank you, oh, sorry Dawn, yes please.
I'm not very good with a microphone and that would be your job, wouldn't it Martin? I just wanted to ask, there were a few glitches really with getting people, referees for their own accommodation. Was that resolved through the landlords or through estate agents or how was that done?
I think that's something Nicky's probably looked at place to answer.
So we work with the Somerset resettlement team, but also the housing team, so they were in the hub. So they were able to put pressure on to landlords. Some of the host families did act as guarantors, but it wasn't something that we thought was, it was a bit above and beyond. So we did support in that way by kind of working with landlords, ethical landlords.
Okay, thanks very much. Thank you Anita, thank you Nicky. Okay, next item on the agenda, we have an update from, an update on the unitary programme from Max and then followed by whether to pay to keep open the toilets and retain the CCTV for one year. So Max first please, thank you.
Hello, my name's Max White, I'm a recovering PowerPoint addict and so I have no slides this evening, I am clean. Obviously huge waves of disappointment around the room, so I'll just kind of update you. You know, you're fans of box sets, sometimes there are kind of action episodes, aren't there, and they're kind of building episodes? This is much more of a building episode, there is some action, which I'll kind of inform you about, but by and large, this is kind of a, almost like a kind of holding position. People will know that our annual meeting, we spent some time really debating and agonising really over whether to raise our precept on the basis of the potential take on of assets and services from Somerset Council to both stave off the financial crisis, but also crucially, to try and gain control of assets that might benefit our town. And we did that and we raised our precept in order to be able to do that and we had a very encouraging meeting with senior officers from Somerset Council to think about what the possibilities were for the way forward. Senior delegation, lots of things put on the table and then just felt like everything kind of stopped. And I think the phrase that was used at the last meeting was the progress was glacial, I think that was the phrase. And I think what we began to see and wise colleagues of mine kind of said, told you so, was a lot of really old behaviours, I guess, from the old Mendick District Council and frankly Somerset Council begin to reemerge, lots of protectionism, lots of rules, not much conversation, not much negotiation. So progress was indeed glacial and I think at last meeting, as Paul was alluding to earlier on, we kind of voiced our frustration in relation to this. And so I then met with councillor Theo Butt-Philip and also had conversations with the leader of Somerset Council and indeed some of the senior officers around all of this. And I'm aware also that other town clerks from the major towns are also kind of arranging to meet the chief executive to raise this issue. I went to the meeting of the local community network chairs who were also raising the same issue. So it just felt like despite all of this wave of enthusiasm and responsibility from parishes, that actually the way in which the council, the Somerset Council was responding was really not in keeping with any of that enthusiasm. I am pleased to say that since that glacial progress, certain officers and certain members of Somerset Council have now come skiing down that glacier and arrived in Paul Wynn's office with progress and offers and conversations. So I'm not, I can't update you on all of the things which are, which feel like they're progressing now, but we expressed an interest in a whole broad range of things and it feels like there's a lot of movement on all of those fronts. Two of those fronts in particular are the ones in front of you tonight, so those are to do with public conveniences and CCTV. I think when we originally discussed this, I think there was a general feeling amongst councillors, who will correct me if I'm wrong, but that there was a general feeling that to not have toilets in the centre of the town would actually not be good at all and inconvenience an awful lot of people, not least undermine our whole kind of tourism offer. And also to not have CCTV in the town, whether there is evidence that that actually produces any kind of, you know, actual impact in relationship, certainly I think some of the perception of safety, I think, is much greater amongst people and so in terms of that, not necessarily crime, but fear of crime, it feels like some, quite a significant thing that we wouldn't want to let go of. So those two things are in front of you tonight, Paul, you know, we entrusted Paul quite rightly and his team to handle those negotiations and so he will go into the detail of that, but it does feel to us like there is significant progress. We'll bring forward to the April meeting, the report of the people that we've been working with, a group of people called activists who have been our consultants, who are really trying to put together a prospectus for the town, trying to say what are the things, what are the collections of assets? But if we took them on, we could really help, they could really help us make a better, more sustainable, more inclusive, more prosperous town for us all to live in. And so you'll see that we hope in April and I think that will be kind of quite exciting, that even though Somerset are in crisis mode, it's really important that somebody, and it needs to be us, I think, is really thinking much more constructively about the future and how we create a town which is both less needy and more prosperous. Because ultimately, whatever, whatever short term budget issues Somerset has, that's actually what will sustain Somerset into the future and, you know, that's been the case throughout the entire unitary debate. Sadly, it's been lost in the crisis, but that long term sustainability, long term prosperity, long term inclusivity is actually what this is all really about and trying to own the assets that give us that. So good progress, I think, in relation to all of that and again, we'll bring the report back to you and Paul will fill you in on the detail of the precise propositions around CCTV and toilets. The other thing to say is that local community networks are, is up and running and going strong. So the Vale of Frum, which is a nice term, topographically probably horrifically inaccurate, but it kind of conveys something nicely, it really talks about the river, which unites all of the different parishes within the Vale. And we are getting really good attendance at those meetings. Members of the steering group, including Lisa and Dawn and other people are, sorry, Dawn's not part of the steering group, but has been really helpful with the distribution of a questionnaire. We're trying to kind of create a survey of all of the parishes to make sure that we are capturing the issues that matter to everybody, rather than to just, to just the sort of the dominant town, so to speak. So I think that's going well and we should have the results of that back next time. And we're moving the local community network meetings around the Vale. So we've been to Buckland Dinner, we were at One Stro last time and it's brilliant actually to really understand and hear from, we give a kind of 10, 15 minute welcome to One Stro, welcome to Buckland Dinner, welcome from all the places that we're visiting and it's really fascinating to actually hear some of the issues that really affect them. I was not aware, for example, that in One Stro, there are people that still get up at one side of One Stro and drive to the other side of One Stro because there is no pavement halfway through the village and all those kinds of things. So it's kind of quite extraordinary that people kind of have to do that. So yeah, so it's been great to actually go around those places, good boosts for the local pubs afterwards, that we all kind of go and visit that afterwards. So it also feels like relationships are building between people. One of the things that relates to unitary, I think, is that one of the propositions is that there should be some kind of highways warden type appointment to do all of the low level maintenance that will in the future by Somerset be ignored and parishes clubbing together in order to be able to fund a post of that type. And that's certainly again, one of the conversations that we'll bring back to you next time. So the glacier is moved, it feels like we're in a much better place, we'll update you more fully next time, but I'm going to hand you over to Paul now to talk more about the detail of the specifics. Is there any questions before we do that?
I think we'll go to Paul, yeah, thank you very much, thanks Max.
Yes, well, while Max has been hobnobbing here with Theo, I've been talking toilets. Just to make sure everyone knows, we're talking about the toilets in the Market Yard car park, the ones are on the picture there. The, what Somerset has done, as has, with agreement with ID Verdi, the cleaning contractors, they've ended that bit of the contract with ID Verdi, which means that the Somerset Council will not be involved in cleaning the toilets unless this town council acts here from the 1st of April. So if we want to do that, the estimate is £24,000 for the year ahead. We're getting quotes in at the moment from various local companies to enable us to slightly have a firmer figure than that. I put in the recommendations at a maximum of £24,000. I'm reasonably confident, but not sure that that will be enough. Because we haven't had, I think we've had one quote so far and we're trying, we had two, so. The other side of the coin on the toilets is that I felt it was important to sort of push Somerset to sort of give us a bit of security, because if we had no ongoing arrangement with them, they could just decide over the next year whether to flog the whole site with a cheese and grain car park. Not that they're thinking of doing that, as far as I know, but I don't want, so please don't consider that a hair running. But we're just giving £24,000 quid this time next year, we've basically kept the toilets open for a year and they're closed again. So I wanted to try and get some security within that arrangement. And what they're proposing is a 25 year lease on those toilets with a two year break clause. So they were offering a one year break clause, which didn't actually give us any security at all, in my view. We can get out of it therefore, but in that meantime, it's a breathing space to enable us to engage with the community, for us to really understand the cost of managing them, do the due diligence on the building, all that kind of grown up stuff that we need to do before we make a significant decision. So I'm suggesting engaging with them on a 25 year lease, in the important bit being, after a couple of years, we can get out of it if we think it's a really bad idea. We, the community, but also we, because it might be far too expensive or whatever reason. That was a recommendation, can we get the recommendations up, Becca please? Thank you, that was the recommendation on the toilets. I'm really happy to answer any questions about the detail of that, Max, sorry Mel.
Pest and maintenance and improvement, I mean, I guess we should have learned a lesson from the Victoria Park toilets, it costs a fortune to keep them up every year and could actually take up the full £24,000. The second thing is, where does the lease end? Is it, because that picture that was on before showed quite a large space in front of those toilets, which needs to be kept clean as well. And I guess the third thing is, do we really need to engage the public when most of the time the doors show they're engaged? And that's proof, proof of the pudding, so that was just a little aside.
I think to answer your first question, which was about, you know, let's be, let's be grown up about this and ensure we know that this is a relatively expensive thing that we might be taking on. That is why I wanted a break clause in the lease, so we suck it and see and then go, whoa, actually, that was a bad idea. The same applies to the engagement point. One of the things, I think, I've got the impression that you as a group and, you know, the council is interested in, is ensuring that we're is ensuring that we're doing this with the support of the community. So again, we've got that period just to check, to make sure that it is a good idea and we do have the support of the community. If you as a councillor group don't want to do that, that's completely up to you.
Just answer the question, the first question, which is who's responsible for the repair?
Yes, so the detail will be in the lease, and I haven't seen any draft lease yet. Longer term, I expect the lease to include the cleaning, the opening, the closing, the repair and the maintenance of the building. So the step before we enter into that is due diligence on the state of the building and estimate how much that might cost. So all that sort of thing needs to be done through the year, before we get to a break clause. Lastly, the point you're making about the extent of the sort of the lease. We are, to illustrate the point that Max was making about the glacier maybe thawing, we are engaging with Somerset Council about that area outside the toilets and running right the way through to the front door of the library and just beginning to have that discussion. And ideally, we'd want to join all those bits of the jigsaw up together. So discussions are ongoing about that. Anyone?
I've got Andy, Nick and then Mark.
You mentioned Somerset are ending their contract with ID Verdi. Is there any requirement on us to pick up that contract with ID Verdi? Or are we at liberty to engage our own contractors? I only ask because I think Rob is going to stop me sending him pictures of full dog poo bins before very long. And I'm not best pleased with what service we get from ID Verdi generally.
There are many parts, but the two parts of the ID Verdi contract we're talking about, one is the toilet cleaning contract. And that is the bit that's stopping and we're not obliged to engage with ID Verdi at all. The other part of the contract is the street cleansing, which is the dog poo area. And the third part is cutting the grass on their open spaces. Those latter two are still in existence at the moment. The contract as a whole comes to the end in June 25. And that's when big decisions, informed decisions between now and then, will need to be made about what we as a council do as a result of that. But that's further down the line. Does that answer your question, Andy?
I've got Nick and then Mark and then Fiona.
Thank you, Max, thank you, Paul. The, I don't know if Mel asked this question, because I wasn't listening, actually, for the purpose. But there's the L shape of that building, so there's a bit with the 'l' in it and then there's the other bit, which is the market yard and the police. We had a meeting with the Police and Crime Commissioner about three weeks ago. He said they weren't going to be using that building anymore. So is that part of the lease, do we get that building as well?
Yes.
Brilliant, good, thank you.
Mark?
Yeah, I just wanted to make it clear, I wanted to get it clear in my mind. The £24,000 is to keep the toilets maintained, the cleaning and the upkeep of the facilities there. So on top of that, if we take over a lease, as Mel's alluding to, we're going to be responsible for insuring and repairing. And will they expect us to pay a premium to take on the lease? Because those are figures over and above the £24,000.
It's up to us to negotiate the lease. So, you know, I don't know at the moment. And what I wouldn't do is enter any agreement without coming back to you guys and going, what do you think about this? Again, to answer Mel's point, I think it's really important that we understand the state of the building. In the short run, Somerset Council will continue to insure it, insure it until a lease is in place. But then, once we have a lease, it will be a full repairing and insuring lease. There may well be, yeah, yeah. We don't know what they are at the moment. But my priority has been to sort of keep the toilet door open from the 1st of April, particularly with the independent market coming on the 6th of April. And then we'll work out the detail afterwards as part of the lease.
Okay, Mark, yeah, right, okay, Fiona?
Nick asked a question that I was going to ask, but I just want to say I've had a couple of very enjoyable mornings at Froom College recently, including on Friday for their Careers Fair, where I spoke more about being a politician generally. And I actually used these two as examples of decision-making, community decision-making. And I took them through, you know, why, who was using them. And lots of them put their hands up, they are very well used by our young people. And I took them through, you know, how much it could cost and I'd worked out how much that is per household. And they had some amazing questions, including some really good questions on CCTV bit, which I will get to. But to say that they were, it was unanimous and two groups of about 10 to 15 students each. Although sadly, I've met one girl on International Women's Day, but we'll get to that another time. But anyway, there's engagement for you.
Thank you, Fiona, engaged, thank you.
I don't know, I mean, shall I just crack on with the CCTV one and then you can decide? Since I wrote the report last week, we've received a draft SLA from Somerset Council that needs a bit of work on it, absolutely. But the points in it that I want to highlight to you, and as you see the little bits in red, I was expecting a fixed price in year... Yes, yes, SLA, service level agreement. So this is an arrangement that Somerset Council has with us to ensure certain things are done. It's a contract, really. We all know what CCTV means, is that? Yes, so I was expecting, as I wrote this report, the, and I verbally told that it would be £28,000 for year two and year three. And hopefully, from their point of view, from year one. When I've looked at the SLA, and I think it's reasonable, it's up to you to say that there's £28,000 plus an inflationary element in year two and in year three. So I just wanted to insert that. The crucial thing to emphasise here is that, again, I think there's a general consensus that CCTV is good. I'd highlight the element in the report where actually it's proposed to be a much better service than it has been provided by Mendip over the last few years, because it's monitored 24/7. So it's kind of live people monitoring it live, responding to inquiries from the police or the public and also doing the other way around and identifying potential problems and activities and bad things happening. To the plugin. Shut up, Paul, shut up. So yeah, it's a better service in summary. So I think that's quite, that is, you know, we are buying something that whether we think is good value for money is another question. But we are buying a better service than we have done in previous years. So my suggestion is that I negotiate with Somerset the best deal. I try and ensure that we don't have an SLA that isn't suitable for us. The cost of that is up to £28,000 in the first year, because, you know, we didn't allocate any money for this. We allocated a devolution budget. And like every other town in Somerset, there was no kind of, right, this is going to be the CCTV budget. And now, right at this, the last minute, they go, we need £28,000 from you. I'm going to try and negotiate that down as low as possible. I've suggested we pay 50% because we hadn't budgeted for it. I know this is in public, but I think why not be transparent about that? But I think the SLA, if it is agreed, it will be quite clearly there, £28,000 plus RPI element, retail price index.
Okay, any questions on CCTV? Go Lisa, then Fiona and then Anita, please.
Thank you. Nick, I know that you've been doing some work on this with Rob, looking at the importance of CCTV. And you're the man who knows about the man on the beat. So I'm just asking for a little bit of insight into your thoughts and the work that you've done around CCTV and the value of it.
Hello, yeah, through. Yeah, I mean, the system, as Paul says, will be much better if it is as they are promising. So instead of having potentially one or two people in a room in Wells, two or three evenings a week, it's going to be a 24/7 force-wide or county-wide capability. I mean, the reality is, I think Max mentioned, CCTV doesn't actually prevent crime because the kind of crime that happens is usually by drunken people who forget their CCTV there. But what it does, it reassures the public, produces a fear of crime. And you really have to have it, because when things happen, the police, it's the first thing in a line of inquiry police will use. They will want, is there any CCTV of this incident? And it also helps them, if it's live monitored, if they get a call in to say there's a pub fight going on in Market Square, Marketplace, they can look at the cameras before they deploy staff, so rather than sending 100 cops, they'll send one if there's already a fight going on. So I wish we didn't have to find this money. But under the, I mean, since 2008, I think, the Crime and Disorder Reduction Partnership, there was an expectation that councils would work with police to provide support for these kind of measures. So yeah, kind of supported. Thank you for asking.
Okay, thanks. Fiona, Anita and then Rob.
Come back on.
Yeah, just to add what Nick was saying, in discussion with the local police, we asked the question, how valuable, how essential is CCTV for local police operations? And they said firstly, just as a information, there's 10 CCTV cameras in Froom, or 12 if you include the ones around the library and the cheese and grain, but they're not including those in the costings. Because that's protecting one of their assets. But so 10 or 12 CCTVs, and the police say they use them every single week. So there isn't a week that goes by when they don't use them. If there's a missing car or a missing person, the first thing they do is they look at the CCTV footage. So I just add that in.
Thanks, Rob. Fiona?
One of the questions from the students who were very engaged in on this, and I don't know whether actually what Rob was saying might sort of be...
We can't hear Fiona, sorry.
It was one of the questions, and I don't know whether I might actually have said something wrong and I might have to go back and apologise. But my understanding was that the police also have CCTV separate to this. No, oh, okay, so this is it. Do we know where these cameras are and are they in particularly, like, valuable locations?
We have a map, so we can share that.
The town centre?
So yeah, these are in public spaces around the town centre and slightly outside the town centre.
We also have CCTV, because we have the one near the Victoria, we own that, right?
No, we don't, no, no.
Okay.
We don't, other than the camera here at the town hall, we don't own any CCTV. But we've worked very closely with the police and we have a slightly different setup for Victoria Park. So that is being managed in a different way. And actually, Nick and I met with the police and Somerset County to review those two systems and work out whether there's any scope for one being adopted instead of the other. So the police own and manage those and they review the footage directly in the beat in Froom.
So that's what I was referring to, so then that's not one of the 10 that we're talking about then?
No, there's three in Victoria Park in addition to the 10 in the town centre and...
Plus the two that are, and then there's obviously private CCTV as well.
Lots of private CCTV.
Is there?
Well, for instance, the cafe in Victoria Park has got three CCTV. That's just one example and there's, I mean, I don't know how many businesses have got CCTV, but there will be many.
Okay, just for information, it was majority but not unanimous on this one.
Thanks Fiona, I've got Anita and then Max, please.
Thanks, Philip. And two things really, just first of all, I think I'm very much in favour of both these aspects because I think that's precisely what we've got the devolution budget for. Because those are things that, if they're considered essential for the town, we should be supporting them. Just as a matter of interest, I wondered if anybody knows how long these tapes are actually kept on the CCTV systems. Do we know how far they go back? I mean, I'm not even sure if that's relevant, but...
Nick, could you fill in on that?
They're not tapes anymore.
Oh, sorry. I stand up to that one, all right.
It goes on to a server.
Okay.
So there will be some law, I can't remember what it is, it's supposed to tell you how long you can keep it for, but it would be a considerable period.
Probably up to the cloud.
Six months or so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, cheers, thank you.
On that, on that point, Dawn, then I'll come to Max, thank you.
Look at everyone watching me, I love it. It's the powerful pause. It's 30 days, that's the requirement that they have done in Bridgewater. Because that was, so I don't know if that's any different to what the new legislation is or anything, but it's just 30 days only.
You very much, Dawn. Nick's not sure, but do you want to come back, Nick, very quickly?
I'm surprised at that, Dawn, you may be right, but certainly when I was working in that field, you'd keep it for a lot longer because, you know, there are historic allegations of crime, there are things you want to look back on and so it seems quite a short period.
Which is why I asked the question, but I was assured it was 30 days. So I can double check that, but that's what I heard.
Thanks, Dawn. Max?
I've got versions of piles of VHS videotapes, as we go through it. So I'm going to just make a broader point, I suppose, about this whole kind of devolution agenda. Because one of the things, regardless of whether we think, what we think about the origins of the Somerset Council financial crisis, it's like if you put that to one side for a second, there is some process here by which things may end up in a different place to where they began. And that may make more sense than where they originated. It never really made sense to me that a district council such as Mendip would have a CCTV operation. It feels to be far more relevant, really, that that sits with police. So I kind of think in many ways that's a kind of, it's a good place for it to end up. And in relation to kind of toilet contracts and all of those sorts of things, one of the great things, one of the sort of myths of scale, which is what people have been trying to build for a long, long time, build bigger contracts and ever longer contracts, is they actually end up, you end up creating an awful lot of cost in the monitoring of those contracts. So partly what I think we've come to with Somerset Council is we've got away from the idea that we, in order to take on an asset, we have to take on their portion of an old contract. So the very fact that we're not necessarily going to have to chupy people, that we can actually arrange to do it ourselves, is the progress, really. And we need to stick to that progress in all sorts of other places. Otherwise, all we will do is take on the costs of the county council as well as the cost of providing something. And that's what we need to move away from. So we just need to keep aware, if you like, where does it end up? What do we actually end up paying for? And need to be really clear that we need improvement in both of those areas to take an asset on.
I've got, Paul wants to come back and then Martin, please.
I think Max's point is really well made, so that was why I was so relieved that we didn't have to deal with ID Verdi. And actually, one of the things I want to ensure within the SLA is we can get out of it. Because actually, if with Rob and Nick's discussions with the police, if they evolve to a point where actually it's downtime, then we are able to do it. And at the very, you know, worst case scenario, we can make that decision after three years. But we might need to be making it sooner if your negotiations evolve.
Thanks, Paul. Martin, please.
Yeah, I was going to ask something about that, those sort of little office spaces that you'd acquire. Would the intention be, if the police leave, to look to rent them, to sublet them to someone else? That's my first point.
That's up for discussion, I mean, it opens some options.
Or use them as a hub for active travel, or, you know, there are all sorts of ways. And I think this is the whole point about this asset transfer, is like, how do we use those differently to the way in which they've been used previously in order to improve the town? And that's the debate that we need to focus on, I think.
The other point, I was simply going to make the point that, talking to a colleague about this in Wiveliscum, they've run their toilets there and other towns have run their toilets. And the general consensus is they've run them a lot better than being run under Somerset's jurisdiction.
Great, thanks, Martin. Okay, if there are no more of the points, then I think we'll look at the recommendations. We need to vote on the amendment, first of all, to point three. Everybody happy with that? Anita? Anita proposing. And Sarah, seconding.
So that's unanimous, I think, yep.
Okay, that's on the amendment, okay, thank you all very much. And then if we take the recommendations now as a whole, please, proposing Steve Tanner, seconding Max.
And that's unanimous as well, thanks very much, that's really great.
Thank you. Okay, item number six, an update on planning an affordable housing programme. That's Jane, thank you.
Thank you. Can I just check this is working, you can hear me? Yeah. Thank you. So I know you've all read the report, so I'm not going to go through it in detail, but there are just a couple of things I'd like to highlight. We could move this slide on, thank you. So on the other projects list, one update since the report is that the changing places is now formally registered and... is now formally registered and can be opened. So look forward to the grand opening. And a reminder to keep an eye out for the new Smiley Sid, which will be appearing in a street near you soon. And if anybody has got any comments or questions on the local plan update, please let me know. It's not that exciting, there's not much affecting Froome. And then, next slide, please. So on the horizon, I think Martin used that earlier, I was very disappointed. So for Saxon Vale, again, Martin has already said this, Acorn have now submitted their revised application. As of this afternoon, it's not yet been registered, so no consultations have taken place. But once we have been consulted, we will, yeah, we'll have to look at dates for a committee meeting where we can discuss that. The next big one, Selwood Garden Community, again, Martin has mentioned this, the revised plans have been submitted. Lost my track there completely, sorry, yeah, the revised plans have been submitted. I'm arranging for a councillor briefing with, sorry, I've completely forgotten his name, Matthew Kendrick, thank you, with Matthew Kendrick, for councillors, so that you can understand what's been updated and to look at the design codes in a bit more detail. That will include obviously Froome councillors, Somerset councillors, and Selwood councillors. Once we've had that meeting, then there'll be another committee meeting to discuss the application, and we'll send our comments back. And lastly, land at Oldford, I have been asked if we know when that is going to be submitted. We don't know, but we do know that they've had pre-application discussions with the Somerset planners, and that they don't have to submit an environmental impact assessment. So as I said in my report, I think we can expect to see it shortly. And just in case you can't work out where that is on the plan, on the screen, the rugby club is just here, and this is the proposed outline of the development, and this is the Froome parish boundary. So it's not actually in Froome, very similarly to the Selwood application, but obviously it is going to impact on Froome's infrastructure and services.
Thank you. I've got Steve, and then Sarah, and then Mel, please.
Thanks, Jane. Yeah, the, the Oldfield site and the Selwood Garden Community site are both pretty much not in our parish, are they? They're going to sort of, another 2,000 houses potentially coming down the line to us, of which, if they're not in our parish, A, we don't get the precept, but secondly, all those houses really are going to be using our infrastructure at the end of the day. We spoke about last year about amending the neighbourhood plan, and at the time, there was no point because the boundary couldn't really be changed. But I think with these coming on the horizon, we really should be writing to Somerset Council and saying that they shouldn't be determining these sites until the boundary for Froome parish has been changed, because they are going to greatly impact the residents of Froome. And if we're not statutory consultees or whatever, then our voice isn't going to be as great as it should be and could be. So I really do think we, we should be writing to Somerset Council and saying, these shouldn't be determined until a discussion about boundary changes has taken place.
Yeah, so it's, it's not just the houses, it's the, the commercial elements, employment that sits alongside it. And even if these two applications don't get permission now, that, you know, that in the future, there will be applica, further applications there.
I've got Paul and Martin that would like to come back on that point, and then I'll come to Sarah.
I, I think Steve's point's really well made, you know, Froome is going beyond the Froome parish boundary, and it will happen rapidly. You suggested that we write to Somerset Council to, to sort of, to get them to explore. Would you like me to do that? I just got a series of nods, because, I mean, I, I can do that, yeah, we'll do.
Martin, you want to come back?
Um, you'll no doubt find out, I'm not sure, it's, I'm sure it's not in Somerset's gift to do that. I think, I think it has to go to the Boundary Commission. I don't think they can just simply change the parish boundary, you may know more than me.
Yeah. And that, that's not right, actually, with the principal authority can alter the parish boundary. Yeah.
That, that's something to clear up then. I've got Sarah, then Mel, Lisa.
Thank you. Unsurprisingly, I'm going to ask about why they don't need to do an environmental impact assessment. The news is looking really bad all over town at the moment for our wildlife, this tree's being chopped down at a rate of knots all over town. We've got these places being built that are going to contribute nothing to our town at all, yet wiping out all our green spaces. Why are they not having to answer the question of what the habitats are there, et cetera? It's dark, it's a dark place, there'll be lots of nocturnal wildlife.
There, there is government criteria that sets out when an environmental impact assessment is required. Seriously, I won't go through it in detail with you now, but just because, just because they don't need an environmental impact assessment, doesn't mean to say that when they submit the application, they don't have to submit all assessments about the environmental impact, which is slightly different. So all of, all of the reports, all of the reports that you would expect to see with a large application covering the, the watercourses, the wildlife, the landscape, they will have to provide all that. An environmental, environmental impact assessment is a separate piece of work, but if you really are interested, I can come in and I can show you the.
It is okay, it's just making me think, are they the Palestinian People's Front or the People's Front of Palestine? Thank you, that's useful.
Okay, I've got Mel next, then Lisa, Anita, and Max.
Steve asked my question, upstaged again.
Over to Lisa.
Steve upstaged my question, which was then upstaged by Mel. However, what I did want to raise is, is that I'm just concerned that we, as a, as a council, have raised our precept to safeguard our residents. And then on, on, on the doorstep, we have all of these proposed new developments, which will impact our residents, and we've been working hard to safeguard them against cuts. And I just want to have that registered as a, as a concern, that, that, that will mean that we are less able to support the residents that we have decided that we're going to.
Thank you. Anita, has anybody already presented your question? No, okay, over to you.
Actually, it just, I, I'm really inquisitive about which parish actually owns that. Is it Berkeley?
It is, yeah.
Yeah? And I'm sorry, but as a local, it will always be Old Ford to me, not Oldford.
Thanks, Anita. Max?
I mean, I think there, there's all sorts of complexities in all of this. I mean, on the one hand, the, the body that you think might actually do some thinking about this would be the local community network, because it's, because it's the collection of parishes. And when I think the conversation was first had about the responsibilities of LCNs, it was really clear that planning wouldn't be one of them. However, and I think Helen Kay raised this point, and I think quite rightly, there needs to be someplace where you talk about the overall impact. So almost all of these things have got infrastructure implications. And the problem is that you assess them all each individually, but when you look at the collective impact on infrastructure, it's really, really significant. So it does feel like there's a conversation that needs to be had about when you've got multiple applications going on, that are clearly going to have a huge impact on towns, where do you have the conversation about the necessary infrastructure? And that feels to me like it needs to be at a kind of local community network level. And Paul's right, it's like the principal authority does have, in terms of altering boundaries, absolutely, that's with the principal authority, but my understanding is that they would have to create a governance review in order to be able to do that, and that the Boundary Commission would then get involved in all that. It's not simple, it's not straightforward, and it's certainly not quick in relation to some of these things. So it may well be that we need to have a conversation about how we deal with this, without necessarily relying on a, on a shift in boundaries in order to be able to do it. I think, you know, talking with other parishes, they're, they're very aware of what's kind of going on, and where, where precepts will land, and, and, and how that's different to where impacts will land. So I think there is a conversation we can absolutely have with, well, Trudwick's Hill and, you know, Berkeley and all of these, all of these different places, because I think it's a very live issue. Thanks.
To come back on your first point, Max, and Mel and Jane jumping if I get this wrong, but if we update the neighbourhood plan to include this, then effectively, we, we have more control and we can stop piecemeal applications like these things, because we'll have a, a valid neighbourhood plan. But at the moment, we're firefighting all over the place.
And then you can use that then to try and attract the kind of development you want to stop that piece of. So I think, yeah, that boundaries issue is one issue. I personally think that's possibly not the main focus, I think it's our focus, but I don't think it's the main one. I think the main one is actually about assessing impacts and getting together with all the different places and creating that local plan, as you rightly say. Thank you.
I think that the transport impacts are something that we really need to look at more broadly, because although each application is determined on its own merits, ironically, the fact that they will impact on the amount of traffic that use the White Road Roundabout is something that Highways England have picked up on, on all these large applications. So that kind of suggests that it, it should be the, the local road network that's also looked at and the impact on that as well. And yeah, I mean, if there is any discussion about that through the LCNs, you know, obviously something that means Steve or whoever would, would like to be involved in.
Okay, thanks. Go to Rachel, I think we've got someone online.
Yes, we actually do have Helen Kay on the line, and she just wanted to remind everybody that Selwood Parish Council, well, according to them, Ebbon Park used to be in the parish, and the boundary was changed to put Froome in, so it's not impossible.
Before my time, I believe.
Okay, thanks, Rachel, and thanks, thanks Helen. Okay. Jane?
Me.
Is that you, I think, yes? Thank you very much indeed, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jane. And item seven, to agree the process for proceeding the next council strategy for 24 to 27, and it's Andy to kick off, thank you.
Yeah, hi. I'm not going to read right through the paper that Paul and I have circulated. It's, it's a pulling together of work that Lisa and Max and various other people have done in trying to give us a structure that we can build our strategy for the next three years and beyond. As we've heard, there's a lot changing, and we need to keep that strategy flexible, agile, responsive to events that happen. And we're, it's also essential that that plan is based on evidence that we are collecting and we will collect, things we know, things we don't yet know, and we need to find out. So the, the approach we're suggesting is that we will put together a brief strategy document, clear, simple, accessible, trying to explain the why as well as the what and the how. But based on a set of themes, some of which have started to emerge from work that Hannah and her team have done, we need to reevaluate those, make sure that they're fully relevant, and that we're not missing anything, and then really start to engage with the town, with stakeholders and other partners, to pull in all their thoughts, all their, all the things that they're thinking about. Because it does need to be a joint strategy with those partners. And we need to make sure that we're using the appropriate IT solutions to expand our ability to engage, to store the information, and to invite contributions. We'll know at the moment, our website is very much a, a push environment, and it's important that we find a way to allow people to contribute to these conversations as they move forward. And then we'll get to a point where we've got a series of evidence-based draft programmes, which will combine to be the new strategy. So in a sense, the strategy will write itself based on what we're finding. And there'll be a number of projects, some of which will be down to FTC to deliver, some will be done in partnership with other people, and some will be delivered independently of us, but all brought together in that overarching strategy. We do recognise that it's urgent and important work, and we're suggesting that to help drive that forward, we put together a very small steering group comprising the leader, the mayor, and the town clerk to drive that forward, that work forward, and then report back to, to council. So that's really the, the thrust of that paper. Opened questions?
Okay, I have Lisa, and then Max.
Hi, Andy, thanks for pulling that all together. Firstly, I just want to, I just want to extend a huge thank you to Hannah and her team, who facilitated a lot of the conversations that, that got to, to where we are. And it's certainly been the work of, of, of all of the councillors who've been in those meetings, who've contributed their ideas, and, and that's how we've ended up with, with, with where we are. So I definitely just want to, to say thank you to you and your team for that, and thank you to all the other councillors who were in those meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you. Yeah, I mean, it, it really has been a piece of work for, from everybody. So yeah, and thanks for holding that to Nikki and Hannah and everybody there. And Andy, thank you for pulling it together in the end, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Max, please.
So echo that, thanks, feels like a very good composite picture. I think I said in my comments to you, though, in being very broad, there are quite a number of key decisions that we need to take along the way, and I think it's really important, and hence the need for a steering group to guide some of that stuff, you know. So it's fantastic that we have a set of themes, but if we pursue all of those themes and all of the information required in order to be able to bottom out those themes, we're going to spend an awful lot of time on this. As I said earlier on, and I said it previously, I think, the key to the, the key to strategy is to get to action as quickly as possible. And so there's a balance to be struck between galvanising that action and kind of gathering the evidence necessary to tell you what action you need to take, but we could spend an awful lot of time on the first bit and never get to the second. And that's the lesson, I think, I see in many councils, I've spent all day today talking about this very subject. So it's really important that we take some, just take some key decisions as we go along. I wasn't aware that the steering group was going to be that small, because it's something I would very much want to be involved in, as someone who has considerable experience and expertise in this area. So we talked about the need for a steering group, I didn't realise it was going to be three people, so I would very much want to be involved in that, please. The other bit to just say is, and, and again, this is a slight warning bell, if you like, I've also spent all of today talking about data, where it's stored, how you keep it up to date, and all of those kind of things. Most of the data that we will rely on is held by your partners, not by us, and the amount of time and effort required to be able to pull that on and put it on our servers and hold it ourselves is for me disproportionate to the benefit it actually gives you. They are the people that will keep most of that data up to date, and we just need to link to it. If we try and pull that into our IT estate, then our IT estate will end up costing us a small fortune plus. So these are the kind of, these are the kind of decisions we need to be on top of as we go through, and it's really important that we get the governance of that right. So, and I, and I'm absolutely here that the meetings that have been held around this have been fantastic, but not everyone can make those meetings. So it's really important also that we create a place in which all councillors can be included, and that the steering group has the relevant people on it and the relevant expertise. So I, I would like that steering group to be expanded, I didn't realise it was going to be that small. And so that would be an amendment I would make, that other interested councillors with relevant experience can also join that, and I'd like to propose that as an amendment, because otherwise I think this is just going to be too small.
Can I, can I just come back on that? And I'm aware that you've made a proposal that we amend this recommendation. So the reason it's deliberately kept so small is because there's actually 17 people in this room, all of whom would want to be on that steering group, or many of them would. And I, I think it's important that we reach out to each individual who's got expertise in this area to, to learn from them and use it. But I, I'd prefer to keep that steering group to a minimal number of people, not least because it needs to be able to meet frequently and, and agilely.
Sorry, just, can you just hold a minute, please? I'm advised that as Max has made a proposal, we need to actually proceed on that.
My, my point would add to that, it would, it would be something that I would incorporate, if, that's all right, is that okay?
Yeah, go for, go for.
I, I agree, I think it's too small. I also think it's not about the roles, the leader and the mayor will be different people by November, so it shouldn't be the mayor and the leader, it should be people. the leader. It should be people-based rather than role-based, because those people are going to be different come May. Apart from Paul, they'll be different people. So you need some continuity on that.
Paul?
Well, they will. But it needs continuity anyways. It needs to be not the role, it needs to be the person.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you for your confidence that I'll still be here in November. I think when Andy and I were talking about this, the sort of the importance of having the leader on that group, whoever the leader is, I think was the point that we were trying to make. And, yeah, Andy and I talked about this, and I concurred with him that having a small group to drive this forward as opposed to a bigger group would be a more productive way of looking at it. But that was the thinking behind it.
But would that not mean that somebody, for example, whoever's the leader now, is involved with the steering group until May, and then all of that work has to then be taken on by somebody else? That doesn't really make sense to me.
Okay, can I, as I've taken guidance, can we go for then? Max, you want to propose, please?
Sorry, but there's discussions still very relevant to the proposal that's going to be made. Because just in relation to your point, so it's, the leader is, you know, the leader of our 17, and we're going to talk to the leader, right? So it's not like the leader was going to be making these decisions alone. Otherwise, what's the point of having the leader? So I guess I'm going back to the role, right? And it's if Lisa's leader till May and then someone else takes over or not, we all talk to the leader and the leader represents our views. That's the point of having a leader. Otherwise, we may as well all 17 be on it.
I'm going to come to Lisa, who's been waiting. Please.
Thank you. As I mentioned, the work that has been done so far has come out of the work amongst all of the councillors. It's been contributed to within those meetings. And I understand that not everybody has been able to make those. Hannah and her team have worked very hard to put on both daytime and evening meetings, some of which don't work for everybody. And we can look at ways of doing that. I very much don't see three people sitting in a room writing a strategy. A strategy is representative of everybody within the council. If this was a proposal for three people to sit in a room and write a strategy that's not representative of what the town needs and what the thoughts and feelings of the councillors are, then I would be adamantly against it. But I don't think that that's what's been proposed. Is it what's been proposed?
Andy, do you want to come back on that?
You quite rightly. So this is about having three people who are working to make sure it moves forward and the right people are involved in the conversations.
Can I?
Go Fiona and then Max.
First of all, a point of clarity, it's actually leader of the council, not leader of the 17 of us, just as a point of clarity on that. I actually think it, I think it's good to have a small group, because I think there is that thing about the agility. I will, after Max has proposed his amendment, I'd like to propose an amendment that and report back on a regular basis with meetings. Let's get that in, with meetings with all 17 councillors invited to every, do you want me to do the language now? I propose an amendment to agenda item number three, or I can do it after Max has done it, but I'm just saying that that is what I will propose, that there is written into that, regular meetings with, and I've forgotten the language in my head now, regular meetings with all 17 councillors, and that that is written in. And that, to me, is much stronger and more inclusive than expanding that steering group.
Can Paul just come back on that, please?
Yeah, absolutely. Anyone who wants to propose anything, we have, but we have to do it in order. And Max is proposing a particular amendment, I think, to recommendation three. So that, I think, needs to be proposed by Max. Someone seconds it, and that amendment is then voted on, and then we have a new set of recommendations. If anyone wants to amend those, then that's the way, that's the next way to do it. Yeah.
Okay.
I just think it's a real shame that this is all getting kind of controversial again. I thought we'd kind of got to a place of some sort of stability or inclusiveness around all of this stuff, really. So I think it's a shame that we're having an argument about it's got to be three people and not, you know, that not all 17 councillors want to be involved in this, bluntly, I don't think. I think there are other people who, and I'm kind of very specifically saying I do, and I'm deputy leader, and I'm also chair of the local community network. And so I do think I've got a contribution to make. And also, this is an area of particular expertise for me. It isn't simply about what's the content of the strategy, it's the number of decision-making points along the way. How many themes? How many, what kind of engagement with the town? What kind of engagement with partners? What's the IT setup? So that is not simply about agreeing a strategy. I think we absolutely, that should all come back to us. But it's about steering the process of getting to that. And we've, there have been different views in relation to that about kind of how much detail to go in with evidence and all of that. And I kind of think, you know, it's well known, if you like, that there are, there are different perspectives on that. And I think those perspectives need to be represented on the steering group. So I would very much like to be part of it. And I'd like to understand who else would like to be part of it. I agree that we should try and keep it small, but not so small, if you'd like, that people with particular interest and particular expertise, particular enthusiasm are excluded.
Okay, right. I'm going to move now to Max's proposal, please. So Max, if you'd like to propose. Anybody seconding?
Hang on, what are you proposing? Yeah. What is the proposal?
Your proposal, please. That's what I meant. Sorry, go on.
To include, to include other people who have got relevant experience and desire to be on that steering group. And that's me, certainly, and that may be other people. I don't know.
So that's, you recommended an expanded steering group. So how do you propose that you identify the membership of that?
By people volunteering and saying why they would want to do it. And so, and I'm one of those people that's volunteering, saying, I would very much like to be part of that steering group, is all I'm asking for. I don't really think that's the proposal.
I'm not being, well, we need to agree on a recommendation. So there are two recommendations that you're making. One is, I'm just asking for clarity. One is that you want to create a steering group comprising more than the leader, mayor. So that's as expanded point. And secondly, you want to be on the steering group. So there are two parts to that amendment. Yeah? So, but, yes, but there are two points you're making on that proposal. So can I just read back so I'm clear? So to create a task and finish group comprising of more than the leader, the mayor and the clerk to be responsible, and for councillor wide to be one of those. Yeah. So that's covered in the more than bit, I hope.
We really need to move on this, but Lisa's asking for a point of clarification.
Sorry, I just want to clarify, does being on the steering group mean that you have more say and more sway over something? So, okay. And everybody would have input into the people who are on the steering group so that nobody has more say than anyone else?
Okay, can I ask then for Paul to read out? One more, Andy?
With respect, why don't we want people with expertise who are willing to put the work in?
So Paul, if you could read out the amendment, please.
The proposed change is to recommendation three, create a task and finish steering group comprising of more than the leader, the mayor and the clerk to be responsible drafting the report, or the, sorry, the council plan, and for councillor wide to be one of these. So is there a?
There are a proposal.
No, no, that is my, that is Max's proposal.
So that's Max's proposal, seconded. And all vote, please.
Okay, so can we keep our hands up? So those in favour of Max's proposal are one, two, three, four, five, six. Those against? One, two, three, four. So that's carried.
Any abstentions?
Yep, but it's still a majority. So you're abstaining. Two abstentions.
Abstention. Three abstentions.
Three abstentions. Okay. Let me just write this down. Okay, so then we come to the recommendations based on the revised application. And Fiona wants to make another amendment.
I'll propose it to you, given it's carried. I'll propose it to the now complete, the now, the new language. I propose an amendment to recommendation to item three to include afterwards, to, with monthly updates to all councillors from the town clerk on the progress of the steering group, and no less than four meetings in which all councillors will be invited to.
Okay, so the two.
Three, you can say three meetings.
So the report says, I think, Andy, doesn't it, this group provide monthly updates by email to the wider team, so that, to ensure everyone has an opportunity to contribute to the process prior to my ultimate sign off by November 24. Do you want more than that?
Okay, thanks, Fiona. Okay, so as we stand now with the new recommendation, point three, okay, are we all happy with that? Can we then have, Mel?
I don't want to make an amendment. Just rather than adding another meeting on, why don't we just say, report back to the appropriate council meetings? Because there will be something like three or four people between now and November? Why wouldn't you do that?
Can do that if you like. Yeah. I mean, it's, it's.
You need that as a proposal? Okay.
I think, I think there's one loose end here with regard to the membership of the steering group, which is the point that Max made, which is, does anyone else want to be on it? So we need an amendment. Well, I think.
I only saw your hand go up, Fiona.
Do we need to actually have names now, or does the amendment say more van, those people can be included?
So if it's more than, I just invite every councillor to every steering group meeting. Is that what you want? No. So how do we, so how do we decide, Max? Well, that's what I just asked.
Okay, so we do need to do that now.
I'm just asking for guidance, that's all.
Max, like, calm down.
Okay, so what we need to do then is an amendment that if anybody else wishes to stand, we need to put that forward as an amendment. Is that what you intended or not? I'm going to, I'm going to take just Lisa, and then we need to move on with this.
I will be really brief. I'd just like to remind everybody that we are all in this room for the benefit of the people of Frome. We work for the people of Frome. We represent the people of Frome. I don't, I would, I would, I would hope that we are not in a council where we sit in a room and make decisions without working with the people in the town. I certainly hope that that's not the case, and that's what nobody's thinking. I really, really just want to hold that we are representing the people of Frome, and that is all of our jobs. And it feels like arguing about this is, yeah, maybe not where we need to be.
Yeah, the debate is there. Yes. Okay. Right. So we have the recommendations. Does anybody, not to discuss it, but does anybody need recommendation three read out again? No? Okay. You'd like it read out one more time? Two people are asking for that. Please, Paul.
So recommend three as amended. Create a task and finish steering group comprising of more than the leader, the mayor and the town clerk to be responsible for drafting of the council plan. And this to, I mean, what I'll do, I'll amend it to this to include councillor wide.
Can we have then on those three recommendations, can we please have a proposal? Andy Rintmore, seconded. Nick Dove. We vote, please. Yes.
As amended.
As amended.
So that's, Andy, you up or down? That's majority. Is anyone abstaining? So. So let me, let me just count again. I might have missed, missed. So Mel, can you hold your hand up? Where's your card? So there were. One, two, three, four, five abstentions. And can I just ask again, those in favour? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. So that's a majority with five abstentions. And I'll get all those people from the video.
Thank you. Thanks, Andy. Thanks very much. Okay. Item eight on the agenda. This is Nick and Rob decide whether to keep Christmas lights on all year round in Cheap Street. Thank you.
Testing, testing.
Okay, so we'll rattle through some of this. So this is to review keeping up some of the Christmas lights. We're only talking about the. We're only, we're only talking about the string bulbs, which are on Cheap Street, Stony Street, Palmer Street and Catherine Hill. So we're only talking about those lights. And I think the way we're going to present it is Nick's going to introduce the reason for it. I'm going to go through some technical detail which you've seen already in the paper, so I won't dwell on it. But it will be a chance for you to ask any clarifying questions because it is a bit detailed. And then, Nick, you're going to wrap up.
Great to follow the previous item. Thank you very much. Okay. Imagine those town centre streets, as Rob says, the sort of iconic streets in the centre of our town. Christmas time, they look quite magical with the festoon lights over the street. So you walk through in the evening, it looks lovely and magical. Speaking to traders, independent business owners in those streets, they've all talked about how lovely it is then and can't we have it more? And I thought, yeah, why not? If you can create that part of the idea, make it a town centre more attractive, people come in and see it. It's also an element of safety, a little bit more light there. We know there's been a couple of incidents in Cheap Street, haven't they, Mark, where people have fallen into, not you, Mark, but you know, people, you know. Sorry, it was our secret, wasn't it? Sorry. People falling into the, into the lead. So those kind of things go to support it. So I found nobody who's said anything negative about it, and I have tried. And I think it will make those streets more attractive as we move into a town centre that's got people going in there for experiences, to eat, to drink, et cetera. It'll be more attractive. So that's why I think we should go for it.
So the detail, I'm going to go through the detail fairly quickly, but if anyone's got any questions, then the detail's here to be reviewed. So we, the proposal is that they would make, they would be on at different times, at different seasons. So in the winter, for instance, as an example, from four till 11, and in the summer from seven. And in the summer, from seven till 11. That detail can be fine tuned. But just to say, obviously it's going to be different at different times. Next slide. So this is, this is, again, I'm not going to dwell on this, but this is a map that shows all the Christmas lights. We're only talking about the festoon lights, as I said. So that's the, that's the zigzag yellows. So that's the map of, of the lights. Oh, that's a. No lights. Next one. So yeah, so, so it's, it just, just to emphasise, it's the string bulbs. It's not, it's not the braided arch. It's not the Christmas tree. And it's not, it's not the ones, the five ones go across Bath Street. It's not those ones. Next slide. So this is, this is, this is sort of the technical side of, of how you do it. Given the time, I'm not going to dwell on this, except to say that there's various permissions. So permissions across the highway. We've already asked twice to confirm that the existing permission, which is time limited, can be year round. So we've asked that twice. We've yet to get back a confirmed reply. But I think as we've asked twice, we're going to move towards assuming we've done due diligence on that one. The electricity, you plug straight into the electrical supply, but you calculate, because there's no meter, you calculate what the cost would be. And we've done that, or we've, we've calculated the electric, electrical usage. You then approach an electrical company to pay because you don't pay the distribution network operator, you pay an electrical company. I've tried three different electrical operators in on the phone for over an hour, written three emails. So far, no one wants to take our money on this, but we will try continuing. The cost of the electricity is not the main element. At least according to my calculation. I did really want that calculated, tested before tonight. But my, my, my working out is it's about 10p an hour. And across the whole year, that would be, well, under £500. I think that's probably all we need to say. Oh, the other cost is going to be maintaining the bulbs when they're up. So we've put a bit of money in for that. And there's bolts that are in the side of the buildings, holding up the wires which are, which are up year round, those wires to hold the lights. Those bolts will need to be tested and there's a cost for that. Moving on. And lastly, there's the possibility, Nick has been exploring this with the owners of the high pavement. If you press one more click to extend it from the red, add one more string in going across at the end of Palmer Street, going to the high pavement. So that would extend the Palmer Street lights. That's just one little extension to the project. Next slide. I've, I've covered, I've covered, I've covered, oh no, this is the cost of the Palmer Street, which is 1,200 to get an extension to Palmer Street. Next slide. The cost this year would be, a significant cost is testing those bolts that they're strong enough. But you do that once every three years. They're going to have to be done anyway. So there's a bit of a cost to that. So that's there. But here's the finale. Next slide. Because we don't put them up each year, there's a saving of £4,000. And because we don't take them down each year, there's a further saving of £1,000. So we pay, we pay £500 for electricity and we save four and a half thousand pounds. Okay, I think that's the technical detail. I'm just going to wrap up, Nick.
Yeah, so we will make the town more magical and lovely to walk around at night and we will save a lot of money. So what's not to like, frankly?
Would anyone like to propose? Sarah.
I have a question. I have a question. What colour are the lights going to be?
They are warm white, they're white, pure white and warm white. They're, they're the existing ones that are there already. No change to the ones you've already, you see each Christmas.
Is it possible just to have warm lights? Don't like the blue lights.
I, I, I would suggest stage one is keep the existing lights up. Stage two, maybe we can review what they look like and the cost and la la, but that's okay. Just keep these.
I'd like to make an amendment.
No, Joe has a, has a question, I think.
I love the idea. Just interested, I've kind of missed a bit about how they're going to be powered. And if there, if there's a way of ensuring that they'll be powered from renewable sources.
They, they, so they, they plug into the power, the, the, the distribution network, the actual physical cables that go right around Frum. So they, there's no meter, they go straight into the actual raw electricity that is powering Frum, if you like. You then work out how much that costs, how much electricity you're going to use. And you then seek to pay for that electricity. There are a number of people you can seek to pay. And it's a good question, Joe, whether one of those electrical providers is a green energy provider. So far, I haven't, as I say, had any reply from anybody. But that's a very good question and we can try to make sure if there is someone. It's a very, it's a very niche thing, providing electrical cost for an unmeted supply. So there's a limited number of people that do it. But if there is someone who does green energy, that's a good, that's a good point.
Yeah, so it's like, thank you for that. Need to know how much it's going to cost us financially, but also in, in carbon, if at all.
Well, it's, it's, it's very small. I mean, it's 10, it's literally 10 pence an hour for all of these lights. So the carb, the amount of carbon is very, very limited. I would, I.
So hardly any. Brilliant, thank you.
I don't know the exact detail.
Brilliant, thank you so much.
Okay, hold your horses, Sarah. As the, you can see on the recommendations behind me and on the screen there, there was an amendment. So can we please have somebody to propose that? Anita. Seconded by Mark. Can we vote on the amendment, please? Great, Nick.
So that's unanimous to the amendment.
Unanimous to the amendment. Thank you all very much. And now to the new recommendations. Sarah proposing, seconded by Lisa.
That's unanimous too.
Can I ask something? The next item is an update on the Climate and equals Emergency Work Programme, which is, the work that goes into it is amazing. And we're at that place now of just wanting this meeting to end, let's be frank. Can we please push it to next month? And I know that the team have been here all evening waiting for this and probably taking the evening off and all of that stuff. And I'm really, really sorry, but I just, I kind of want to make sure that they're given, it's given space to actually be listened to and heard and not just sort of rushed through. But also, do they want to speak, I guess, is also the question. Would you rather do it now or do you want to do it?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna put it to Owen and Joe, but there is a decision that needs to be made. And Peter, yeah. Okay, who'd like to start off? Thanks, Joe.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me? First, I'll start with the new addition to the Healthy Homes Project, which is the community retrofit, retrofit project. Sally started working with us in the summer. She completed various different training courses, accreditations. And she very quickly started serving. We meant to be delivering 60 surveys a year, 60, 60 retrofit surveys a year. She's completed 32 and there are, there's a waiting list. So she's right on track. She's held an event, initial event, consultation event with the, with the community Future Shed. And because she's been so efficient with hitting the ground and then really, really starting really, really quickly, we, she didn't need as much training as we anticipated from the subcontractor, the Centre for Sustainable Energy. So we managed to rework the budget and then use the underspend from Sally's mentoring and training to do lots of additional things to really, really, really improve the project. So for example, if people have a retrofit assessment done, it's almost, it's just over 70 pages. It's a really, really detailed report and there are a lot of recommendations which are tailored to that particular household and that house. And there are lots of gaps in an industry and people just don't know what to do next. So now CSE, thanks to their underspend, are providing advice line. So once you hear the report and you don't know what to start, you can call an advisor that will handhold you and, and help you through the process. And also she's organising 12 public talks to cover retrofit themes and they're starting in April. So anything from cavity wall insulation to heat pumps, solar panels, anything. So people, members of the public can come and, and learn about it more. And also that additional money is also being used to get the Centre for Sustainable Energy to provide even more reports because we've got that waiting list. So get to people much quicker. And also toolbox talks for local contractors. So we can get people that can actually do retrofit in Frum locally. Next slide, please. Both of us have been meeting regularly with retrofit Somerset, trying different things. One of the new additions is FireWarm, which is an online platform, online tool that can help people reach our services and also give additional tool for our volunteers. And Sally's also attended a green construction advisory panel event in Exeter. And these guys are people that are trying to improve how the industry works in terms of sustainability and provide lots of training and education to contractors in industry. This is the big gap, the big barrier to retrofit. We can be doing as many retrofit assessments, but if we don't have the installers and fitters and trained local installers, then, then we are stuck. Next steps, she's, she's working on evaluation and she's just planning lots of more outreach events and community engagement side of things. Next slide, please. Energy advice side of Healthy Homes. Incredibly busy this year, really, really busy and a lot of fuel poverty coming into the surface. But we've, we're engaged with a lot of people. Forty-eight people attended energy advice sessions, mainly at the library. Fifteen home visits, many resulting, three today, so that's 18 now. Many resulting and, and life changing things happening for people. People not having central heating or having wrong central heating, not knowing how to set the controls, not having enough money for gas. So really, really meaningful stuff. And we've been able to do many more home visits since our energy advice volunteer have started one day a week, six and a half hours. She's just been incredible addition to the project. We've been able to reach so many more people. She, we're in the process of recruiting more energy advice champions. So we've got, we've had five before Caroline, the energy advice volunteer coordinator joint in January. We've recruited three more and we've got two more interviews next week. And Caroline also organised an event, a refresher and kind of get together for existing volunteers. And they, they said they were feeling really energised. And also we managed to order an additional 50 winter warmth packs distributed around the community. There are a few more left, thanks to free co-funding. Next slide, please. Moving on to plastic free period. So 40 celebration packs containing three pairs of period pants, starting people young and creating good habits and saving a lot of, a lot of plastic going into a lot of fuel and also saving people money tackling, tackling fuel poverty, sorry, period poverty. We've been delivering sessions from college to boys and girls. And I can't take credit for that third bullet point because it's been Charlotte from the medical practice and the comms team and Fiona who are organising or organise this amazing fundraiser. Still have a long way to go. So if you haven't supported it yet, please, please do and spread the message. But I think most of you are aware that it's to raise money to buy period products, sustainable period products for your eight, nine students. Katie worked really hard on her display. And in addition to that, that's plastic free period, which has been main focus of the plastic free for the last few months. But we have also been awarded retain the plastic free community status with more businesses joining and more, more people following the less disposable plastic. Next slide, please. Community wildlife mapping project. It's still going strong. It's been going for two years now and we are on 3,000 observations, just, just over, with 238 people regularly updating. We've recorded 923 species. And what I'm doing at the moment is creating smaller sub-projects for, for, for places like Rodden, Welshmill, prioritising Shawfield to help us inform the management plans that the environment, environment team have been working on. And the community wildlife mapping sessions are being organised for Frum College. They also have their own project and also in community, Broadway community allotments, they also have their own accounting project that kind of sits under the wider Frum project. I've been supporting Frum Families for the Future with the Vision Project and I know the comms team have been too. And in terms of promoting the wildlife friendly gardening, which is so important, I can't stress enough how important it is. The World Bunch have been still championing the idea and helping us connect our green spaces with people's gardens. That's it from me, very briefly and very quickly. And I'll pass on to Owen.
Thank you, thank you. And I'm just very conscious of time, so. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. So I'm Owen. I, I, I'm the evaluation lead for Green and Healthy Frum. So in addition to kind of collating all of the outputs, some of which Joe has, Joe has reported for the, for the strands that we, we lead here from the council. The evaluation itself has had a, you know, a number of outputs in itself, including the Green and Healthy Frum impacts leaflet, which was kind of reporting on the development phase of the programme before, until, until we started the, the new grant. We also undertook early in the stage a kind of review of the deliverables that were included in the bid to the Climate Action Fund and put in place a monitoring system to ensure that what we're doing, delivering through each one of the strands is, is, is meeting as far as we can, the, the targets that we, we secured the funding on. In that process, I, I've, I've implemented a, a kind of data collection plan for qualitative and quantitative data. So not only the numbers and the, and the outputs from, from each of the strands, but also a big emphasis this year will be on collecting the stories of the outputs of the, yeah, the stories of the, of the outcomes for, for the people in the community that have been realised to, to the programme. I mean, the process of developing links with different audiences, all the evaluation for the, for the numbers, including with policy audiences and academic. And I've been working on a lot more storytelling through blog posts with the storytelling function of the programme. One of the big kind of pieces of work in the early part of this year was leading a review of the social return on investment process, which was part of the bid, but is very difficult to, and complex to deliver as part of such a broad based project as Green and Healthy Frum with lots of different types of, of intervention in, in the community. That process led to our decision to discontinue it. And that has given us £26,000 of caf funds to reallocate to initiatives that we can deliver more impact in the community, including with the volunteer coordinator that Joe mentioned earlier. So there's ongoing discussions as to what to do with the rest of that money. And as I said, the more of a focus on qualitative data and really developing that storytelling function as we go forward. You all look knackered, so I'll let you go.
Thank, thank you, Owen. Okay, Peter?
And all I'm going to say about active travel is that the work that we're doing is thriving and you can read all about it in the report. And that really moves us to the recommendation. And just to introduce that, we've got a proposal to extend the contract of the Home Energy Advice Volunteer Coordinator. You've heard about the work that they're doing from Joe. The extension would enable us to expand our volunteer workforce to 20, which is a target for the lottery funded project. And it would help us to embed all of this work in the community, which is really important in terms of the legacy of Green and Healthy Frum. So there are the recommendations. I'll obviously take any questions.
I think we'll go straight for recommendations if you can still manage to lift your card. So propose, Mark Dorrington, seconded, Andy Rintmore.
It's unanimous.
Thank you Joe, Owen and Peter. Hannah, very quickly.
So sorry, very quickly, the neighbourhood network, people that were here at the start just messaged me to say, we totally forgot to thank Frum Town Council because it was the grants awarded by the town council that made it possible to do the transition streets project, they just wanted their thanks to be registered.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for coming along this evening. Thank you those online and thank you team for this evening and technical support and so on, thank you Paul. Next meeting on Wednesday, the 17th of April 2024. Thank you all and have a good evening.